Six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. First item, agenda additions or deletions? We can just add that under thirteen?
Yes.
So approval, select board, meeting minutes. We have minutes from July seventeenth and July twenty-sixth.
Now Carolyn was not at one of the meetings, so I think we have enough quorum to be able to approve that one.
Yeah, that was the July twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the minutes from July seventeenth and July twenty-sixth?
Can't combine them, no.
Oh, no. So I make a motion to accept the minutes of the July seventeenth meeting?
I'll second it.
Any comments or corrections? None? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Close? None?
Of course I can't find.
We have July twenty-sixth.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-sixth?
I'll second it.
Discussion or correction on those? Fellas in favor? Aye?
Aye. I think Carolyn, you abstain?
Yeah.
There it is.
Pay orders. Come on, Sandy put a new revised sheet.
Yes.
The only difference is the pocket has control, there's actually more voices, so...
So pay orders for August date two thousand twenty-three are now seventy-six thousand nine sixty-nine and thirty-two cents. Any comments or discussion?
I make a motion to approve the pay orders as of August sixth, twenty-two thousand twenty-three?
Is that a second?
Second it.
Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close?
Road commissioners report.
Not a whole lot to report. I guess we missed that storm last week. I wasn't here, so... They're still doing some ditch work, finish up grant work and stuff, and then as soon as we know when the grader's gonna come in, they'll start grading roads and stuff and putting more material down, but right as is, kind of things are idle in that grader department. Most of the roadside mowing is done. There's about, I think, West Hill and part of Hartsborough left, and one little piece up on Bear Mountain Gate. I haven't been up there. Most of that's all done. The other thing was, I was thinking about on paving. Wilk has called me, and I couldn't get back to him last week, and I called him today, and he hasn't got back to me yet, is the balance of what's left in the paving budget between, I think it's fifty-five roughly and seventy-five. Have him pave the rest of Maple, but maybe take some of the gravel budget, that's a hundred and twenty grand, and pave that last piece, which will probably just be the section between Route seven and the railroad tracks, just to finish that street. I just thought I'd run that by the board, so we don't have a little teeny piece of a street there that needs to be started on next year.
How much of that gravel budget, you said it was one-twenty, is that how much we have left?
Um, I think that's what I read. And she said it didn't carry over. There were sixty-eight thousand of that that didn't carry over.
Okay. So is that what we have available through that?
Yeah, that's what it says, I guess, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Okay.
So I thought if we took, you know, whether it was ten thousand dollars, but we at least finish that street while they're right there, I don't know what the board thinks about that.
Is that what you think approximately of the budget?
Yeah, I don't know how much...
For take?
Yeah. I think it was, the original bid was seventy... Was it seventy-five or seventy-seven, I think the original bid is, so...
Okay.
You know, it's gonna be maybe just only two thousand, I don't know. I can't remember exactly what the first bid was. About to put out.
So we come up to Route seven?
Yes. We've gotta stay twenty-five feet off the tracks on both sides. But I thought we oughta pave that little piece and get it done. And so we don't have... That'll be the first thing you'll have to figure on, is they'll have to move their equipment in just to do a little piece there next year.
Oh, yeah.
If we can get it done this year with a little bit of the gravel money, we can finish it. It'll save that moving charge.
How bad do you think we're gonna get hit on the gravel budget for fixing all the flood damage?
Yeah, that's a good question.
All that should come back to us. That's all, if, you know, FEMA comes across the money.
Probably need to cover it for me.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
When is when FEMA's gonna come through?
You've probably got... You must have close to twenty grand, twenty-five grand in it right now, in stone, basically three-inch stone and five-inch stone, and some bigger stuff doing that. Seward Hill, and there's still a little more digging left up there to do.
Now, are all those rocks considered gravel?
Yeah, it falls under a gravel budget. As far as I know, all that stuff that we do for, with the road crews falls under gravel budget.
So if it was an extra twenty, we would still be well covered? From the number that we have right now.
Bruce, do you have the price, or maybe Sandy does, what his original bid was?
I haven't got it.
Wilk's original?
Wilk's original bid. I wanna say seventy-seven sticks in my head.
Well, I mean, the one that we just approved is fifty-five.
Yes, but he, his original bid included all of Maple Street. I'm just curious. I just thought of that. So that would basically be your difference between seventy-five and up to what his original first bid was. I would think would be pretty close.
We just want, um, one thirty-four, one thirty-four ton.
Yeah.
Estimated six hundred sixty tons.
It's more like eighty-three.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight. So it'd be thirteen, seventy-five, thirteen difference to finish the street.
And still be well off in the budget of gravel?
We looking at this last year's budget, or this budget we're in right now?
Budget we're in right now.
That's gotta get us through until July first of next year?
Yes.
What do you think?
I think it probably, it's a good idea to get it done. It'd be cheaper to do it now when he's here, but...
It's a risk.
When is FEMA gonna pay us back, and we get any more of these storms, we're gonna be in trouble.
Or if there's any damage over the winter that we have to figure out in May and March?
The check's in the mail. You know that.
I know. It's a very slow mail.
Yeah. Yeah, you could be... I bet, I bet a year out on your FEMA money. Yeah?
I think, I mean, the last time when our meeting went through... It was a while before we got any...
It was eighteen months?
Yeah, before we got any money back. We did well when we got money back, but it took a while to get the money. I mean...
So historically, do we usually use all our gravel budget?
Well, I thought we used a lot more than we did this year.
Okay.
That was, I told them to use it up, but it didn't work, I guess.
So what do you think? Is it worth the risk?
I guess the big question is, if we run out and then we have to... Because the accounting, we have to just basically just believe that it's just not happening, like we're not getting the money. We know the money's coming in, but if we, we're thinking in this way right now, is that if we don't get that money, for whatever reason, that's what we're trying to plan for right now, right?
Right, yeah.
So worst case, Phil, can you live without that money in your sand budget next year? Or this?
Gravel budget?
Yeah.
I would say so. It says there's a hundred and twenty in there. Am I reading that right?
That's...
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
And that's the budget, one twenty-five?
Yep.
So that means less gravel along the roads until we get another...
Well, we need no one. It's...
We spent five thousand already, so...
Yeah, we spent five.
So it's an overage of a hundred and nineteen?
And that five grand is probably the actual stone stuff for... Although, yeah, we had July, it's already in August. I say we can. We just, we need...
Yeah.
I just think it's gonna look kind of foolish.
Yeah, by consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's good with it, we can do it by consensus?
Yeah, okay. Because he called me about something, and I don't know what it is. He had two questions. So... Thank you for that.
When's he gonna do it?
Now, that could've been one of the questions. We got a lot of work to do before we get that to get payment.
Okay, exposed to them.
They're gonna go do all that ditch work, and I think there's a column to be replaced on Sugar Hill. And stuff, so... They've gotta work up there first, rebase that a little.
You having a cash flow problem right now, Julie? What's that?
We've got a crunch right now. But we'll get the bills out and... I mean, I bet they don't pay till October. Bet they have a lot lined up before they get to us.
Yeah, they've, they've got a lot of work going on. It's not gonna be for at least a month, six weeks, that we're gonna be ready the way things are going. We have some prep work on the bridge.
Well, the bridge can't be paved until we get a state contract. We don't have that yet.
No, I'm talking on the end where it washed, where floods. We have to rebase that, dig that stone out, the bigger stone.
Are we gonna wait to pave till we get that contract?
Well, that's what I'm hoping. Yeah, foolish to have that, they won't come back, they'll charge you.
Right, so we don't even have that.
We have work on Waldo to do, or, yeah, Waldo. And then we also have all the work on Seward Hill to do, so it'd be a minimum of six weeks.
Has anybody been down to look at Waldo yet? You said somebody was coming in?
Nope. State of Vermont has not got back to me.
Okay.
Look at that, crack is actually sealing itself back up.
It's from all the rain, everything washed into it. I wouldn't walk over there, though.
Oh, boy.
So Mr. Holden on Dawson Hill is asking about the driveway recall, uh, replacement.
So we'll check on that. I'll have Steve go out and look at that. You gave me the number today. I'm pretty sure it's the one of them.
Well, the, the, a couple, wasn't it, almost a month ago, when I showed you that picture of the drain prospect?
Yeah.
It's now sunk.
Yeah. I talked to them about it.
Okay, okay.
And the state was up here pumping these...
I saw that they're doing, because that one was completely plugged.
The eyes out today.
Yeah.
I don't know how they made out.
I don't know if they did the one in front of Burt's house.
There were any swallings for trying to get that opened up. That one's plugged.
Okay.
Is Burt's plugged again?
I don't know. I just know that the one, the one that was right before Highland Avenue, that was plugged up, and I saw them at that one.
Has the road crew made arrangements to put in the water out there?
Nope, I don't think we've talked about that yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she hasn't called me back with a time from Bill Ocean, I think, that's the problem.
Right, yeah, that's what's...
That's what we're waiting for. Other than that, I don't think there's too other, too much else going on my part.
Sandy had in her notes here, the conservation commission is planting trees, it's still meadow in the fall. I want the road crew to be aware of any soil they need to get rid of. They can get rid of it there.
I talked to Sandy about that a little earlier. If it's in the right spot, it'll make good soil for doing that, and if not, it's gonna be sandy and full of salt.
Right.
And that's, I don't think that's...
And then the other thing?
It might add a little of everything in it. But yeah, they have plenty of ditch cleanings. If they can get, you know, a good load of silty stuff, that was topsoil-y, that'd be the way to do it. Dump it over there and let it dry out, and they'd have something to work with.
The other thing she had in here was the state paid the first quarter town highway payment on the fourteenth of July to assist the town with flood recovery. So they paid the second quarter early for a total of twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. All set then, Phil?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable mentions, we want to thank Wayne and Deborah Kelly, who donated funds to the summer rec program. Emergency management director Jim Bagnell for going above and beyond in the response to the flood event. Wallingford Thritford administering a Vermont Community Foundation grant of ten thousand dollars to assist flood victims. Have they actually seen that yet, Sandy, or no?
Uh, they should be getting the funds pretty soon. Maybe even this week.
Public comments? You're here for the fireworks thing, right?
Yes.
Setting the municipal tax rate. So...
I'll go over the twenty-twenty-three year-end results. Starting with income, we started the year with a carryover of seventy-four thousand three seventy-two twenty-eight. And I'm gonna just highlight the income. Going down Green Mountain National Forest, repayment was over forty-seven hundred dollars. Transportation income was over sixteen thousand one hundred. Delinquent taxes, we were forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-three thousand over budget. And current use, we were three thousand over budget. And lake and rec operations were over thirty-nine hundred dollars. The grant income that you see under forty-five thirty-four of thirty-three thousand three eighty-nine, that's offset by the expenses of forty-two thousand. Wallingford Day records restoration and a donation of four thousand dollars for the basketball backboards was also offset in expenses. Total income at stated budget, over four hundred and thirty-nine thousand on the balance sheet, but this includes the ARPA funds that we got, as you can see, under four five five seven of over, of nearly four hundred and seventeen thousand, which are going to be offset in awards. So, and current property taxes fell short by a hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred. So that was income. And total expenses for the year were three hundred and sixty-one thousand eighty-three dollars over budget, but that includes the ARPA awards of four hundred and seventeen thousand. That's offset by the income. So going down by category, administration expenses were over forty-four thousand seven hundred, but that includes your grant expenses of forty-two thousand. And then overtime for the road crew and insurance were each over by thirty-two hundred dollars. Town government operations, that's where your ARPA expenses show. So even though it shows three hundred and seventy-one thousand over budget, it was because of the ARPA expenses of four hundred and seventeen thousand. Most notable savings was under transfer station fees. Operating expenses, they were under thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, so probably all the recycling has helped. The highway department budget came in under by almost fifty-nine thousand, which was because of winter sand, salt, and gravel. They were all under budget. Sheriff's line item was under budget by almost thirty-nine hundred. And looking at the rec budget on the last page, it looks like they were over budget, but they actually came in under by fifteen hundred, because you have to take out Wallingford Day, and you have to add in that donation for four thousand. So we're starting the fiscal year with a surplus, seventy-eight thousand two twenty-one forty-seven. Does anybody have any questions? So if we go to the fiscal year twenty-four town tax rate, we have to raise, the budget was approved, voters approved raising one million fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-three thirty-nine in taxes, so if we minus the carryover surplus of seventy-eight thousand two twenty-one forty-seven, we'll have to raise taxes of nine seventy-two, nine eleven ninety-two. And this will be, the tax rate calculates. If we have one, the state's been late doing their current use, so that affects our grant list. There's one still outstanding, because they haven't finished, but right now, based on the current grant list, which might change a little bit, but it won't be, it won't be a big difference. Using the surplus and what we have to raise, it will bring the town tax rate to point four one five seven. And last year's rate was point three nine three nine, so two cents or up, which is five and a half percent increase. So I need to approve that rate, so we can get the tax bills out.
I make a motion to accept the town's tax rate at point four one five seven?
Second? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Julie?
That's it.
Homestead declaration, late penalty. We want to assess late penalties to property owners who failed to file a timely homestead declaration. The state allows up to a three percent penalty if non-residential rate is higher than the education property rate. This is something we've normally done in the past?
I'd say, yeah, it's been, it's been going long enough, people shouldn't forget it now.
This will help remind them to file.
When do they have to file for a homestead?
I think it's on the...
April fifteenth?
Same, same time. File was done same time.
Right, right, right.
Want to make that a motion, Mark?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we assess the penalties for, for pass due a homestead declaration.
Second?
For three percent?
For three percent, yeah.
Any discussion?
Second.
Okay. Fellas in favor?
Just before we move on, it said three percent if non-residential rate is higher than the homestead, and then eight percent if the non-residential rate is lower than the homestead. Are we good with that? Do we need to amend the motion? One's for if it's higher and one's if it's lower?
It'll be three percent.
Okay, so it's thirty.
Non-residential is higher this year.
Never mind.
Thank you, Julie. So I guess we're up to town on boiler replacement. Just a thing, Ralph.
I was asked to get three proposals from civil engineers, mechanical engineers, about the boiler replacement, to make recommendations, to test it, to follow through with it. I used to be in an architectural firm in Rutherford, forty-five years, same building. Anyway, I worked with a few, but there aren't very many engineers around. There's there's a couple in Rutherford, and one I did a lot of work with, which is Engineering Services of Vermont. They have some problems over here. I also did a lot of, quite a bit of work with you, Boy and King. They're out of Randolph and out of Burlington. And WV Engineering out of King, New Hampshire. They do, they still do quite a bit of work around here, so they're in the area and could be available to follow through on this. So I met each one of these firms. The last one was WV, and he was trying to get through Ludlow during the flood and had to cancel, and then he put it off two more weeks here on vacation, so we're a little late on this. But anyway, I spent probably an hour or more with each one, going through the building, looking at the basement, looking at the boiler room, the storage room, the chimney, telling them the rest of the projects that we envisioned for, for the building, the heat pumps on, on this floor, maintaining the existing heat upstairs.
But... They hasn't been determined that we're gonna do that yet.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know that then. I came on board a little late, because Jay White was doing it, and I took over for him as he was on vacation. So there's some things I might have missed. Anyway... So we toured everything. They looked at the boilers, pretty sad shape. There's some questions about the chimney, but the more I looked at it, then you put a lot of money into that chimney, stainless steel piping that goes through a storage room and then into an old chimney, which we don't know if it's lined or not. But if you get through the roof, it's stainless again. That must've cost quite a bit of money to do that, and the, the old chimney is in the brick of the wall. So I'm not sure how they dealt with that. So the first thing was to look at oil-fired fuel oil boiler, maybe two boilers, two smaller boilers, which might be easier to get. You could, you, you might need to run them full blast in both of them in January and February, but you could slow down in the off-seasons. I looked at that. You've got fuel tanks in the basement. You've got fuel tanks in the basement. You know, there's like 500 gallons of fuel oil down there. There's no dam around the tanks. It takes up quite a bit of space. I got to thinking that maybe that, maybe that might not be the right approach. We talked about propane as an alternate, and right from the start, everybody said there's no room to put a tank out here. And I looked into that a little farther, and it appears, it appears from the tax map, I showed you what I have. I talked to the neighbor, there's a lilac hedge down there. She says it's her property line. So we are 25 feet, maybe, 20, 25 feet? We could bury a propane tank in this side yard as an option, and I explained that to each one of these engineers to take a look at it. Propane is cleaner to burn. It's, you can modulate the flame so that it's not full blast or, or nothing, so you can tone it down. It doesn't need a chimney. You can go right through the wall with an exhaust and air intake. So I sort of introduced the idea to see what they were thinking and have given you some information on some of their responses to that. These guys are professionals there, I think can recommend the best thing, maybe, maybe it's not the cheapest. If you have to do anything with a chimney, that's going to cost a bunch of money.
Are you sure that doesn't, that double wall doesn't go right up through the chimney the entire length?
I didn't see how it could, because...
They do that quite often.
But the chimney's very narrow. The pipe going into it is like this. I didn't look up the chimney. Whole bunch of stuff in front of it. I didn't tear things apart to see, but all three of these engineers that came seemed very competent with lots of experience, and this is their, we're telling you, this is their, their business. So I think you could take a good look through that and what we asked them in the opening statement there, that you were seeking engineers, and then look at their resumes and their pricing. There's a range there. I think Engineering Services of Vermont probably gave us the best deal because we've done so much work together. And still, they still, my office still does, even though I'm not there. I don't, do you have any questions?
What's the total for each of them? For each of the different bids?
I didn't add them up.
One was $10,000 something, one was $8,000 something.
Okay. So it's actually just, it's adding up all of these, or these are just proposed, I guess? That's just the confusing way that they're laid out, is that if, there's no clear, like, this is how much it's going to be.
My suggestion would be that we table making any decision on this tonight. And we can ask questions, but...
It should be there.
I don't think any of us have seen this until the meeting.
Right.
I'm sorry, I've had, I had the two ready, and then I was waiting on this third one and, and just came today. So I rushed down here with it, hoping you might have time to see it. So we're facing winter. One thing that concerns me, let's say that we get into winter, we haven't done, we're not done yet, and the boiler cracks out. It would be nice to get something started, so you can nurse that one along and, and at the last minute change over, you don't really want to bring a temporary heat unit in here, that's a big deal, so. You could, when, when we talk about the fuel oil, that can be two small, small boilers, and they could be in the existing boiler room. That needs some work, too. There's, there's some, it's damp, everything's rusting down there, the floor is, it's missing concrete. I think you do have fire door on it, but you have a ceiling with asbestos board on it. It's not viable, it's not, I don't think it's a problem, but the pipes are all rusted and tough down there, so.
I think we would like time to be able to look it over. We could table this for the next meeting.
Well, what have we got for funds to even consider funding this this year?
Do we have a building fund?
We're looking at the building fund.
And how much is in the building fund right now?
Not counting this year's budget, it's nearly 111,000.
Okay.
Now, if you did do an underground propane tank, you'd probably want to hire a surveyor to make sure that property line is where we know it is. We need to be 10 feet away from the building, and then three and a half feet for the tank, and then 10 feet from another property line, or, or 10 feet, if it's not buildable, and I don't think they can do any more additions over there, we might be able to go closer. So I think there's some leeway, leeway there, but we need a surveyor.
I have to say, I'm not in favor of propane. Propane has less BTUs per gallon, it's a higher cost per hundred, thousand BTUs, and when you work it out, if you go with propane, you're stuck with whoever puts the tank in for you. You can't bid out propane.
You can pay for the tank yourself, have it installed.
I'm not in favor of putting a propane tank out there in the ground either.
Okay.
Just one person on this board, but...
Your engineers might be able to help, help, help you take a look at that, anyway.
I mean, we're having problems getting a generator out there and doing another penetration on the building for a generator. I'm not sure how propane's going to help, whether there's another hole in the ground out there is going to fly with, because it's a historical landmark, so.
Right.
There's a lot of, lot of stuff that would have to be looked into.
Certainly.
It's definitely not, you know, something that definitely won't happen before winter, regardless.
Well, that's, that's another thing I just want to say. I mean, it seems like we're overcomplicating this again. You're talking about two boilers. I mean, the intention was we were going to replace the boiler, the boiler. Keep it simple. I mean...
That's what we were trying to do.
Basically, from the ceiling down, replace and update everything. Not, not hire engineers to design a system.
Well...
This thing from Du Bois and King, I mean, we put this out there with all their specifications. It's going to be just like when we did the, the painting. Nobody's going to bid on it. It's got so much detail and...
The Du Bois and King is very detailed. I agree with you. Engineering services is much simpler. If you're just going to replace that boiler, bill us, get somebody locally trusted, put it in there.
But I guess if we are getting the heat pumps in, it would make sense to make sure that we're not getting something that's going to be overly huge, that's going to, that we don't need anymore. Because for the majority of the...
Every guy I've talked to that puts in heat pumps will tell you, no matter what, you need the heating system.
No, for sure. No, no, I'm not saying that to negate the boiler and all, but just whether or not we need as beefy of a boiler for that versus, because if they're, the heat pumps are taking off most of it except on those really sub-10 days, then you don't need necessarily a boiler to do all the rest of it, because the heat pumps are doing that work. That's, that's what I'm, if like an engineer can figure that out for us, that might be...
On a really cold day, the heat pumps aren't going to give you anything. Those are the days you need the big boiler.
And again, it goes back to that historical landmark. What are we allowed to do on the outside of this building? Can we put pipes up the outside for the heat pump, for the condensers up, you know, for the pumps on the outside, run the, run the piping up into the...
Manholes.
You know, I mean, what are we allowed to do? We may not be allowed to do any of that stuff.
We, I was talking to Jay about that, and where it juts out, just behind where it juts out, we can do a pipe right up that corner, inside corner.
We tried to put one more hole on the side of the building out here to run another power line in.
Yeah.
We got all kinds of grief about it, and they were really hesitant on what that was going to look like and where it was going to go and...
Is there preservation here?
Uh, I think it was, right? They had a, they were concerned, you know, we had to throw in three or four drawings, and it was just a continual fight. So I don't know if I'd plan on heat pumps at this time. I think if we're going to do something, I think we should look at the boiler and say, this is a boiler to fit the needs that we have now in this building.
I talked to a plumber today, and he said, in his own home, he turns the heat pumps off in December and until like late March or April, depending on the weather. They're just not, not performing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've talked to several guys that install heat pumps, and they say they love heat pumps, but they, they all say the same thing. You need a furnace.
Right.
A boiler, or you need...
These pipes freeze, you're in big trouble, so. Well, if you'd like to roll this around, I'd be glad to come back and talk a little more if you want to, or, or we could take a low price here or something and talk to an engineer and see.
Do you, do you need an engineer to install a new boiler for the size that's in there now?
Probably not. But if you're going to use two boilers, which is recommended, two smaller ones, the bigger ones are harder to get, I guess, these days. I don't know why.
Okay.
Everybody's talked about two smaller boilers.
To me, that makes no sense either.
Yeah.
You double the price on everything. And when it comes times to service it, you got to pay for two of everything?
Not necessarily. I don't know what the prices are, so I can't comment on it, but...
And if we stayed with oil, to go with two boilers, we would almost have to increase our capacity in the basement, I would think.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I, I don't think you would.
You're operating okay now.
Yeah, I don't think you would.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's just, I'm just thinking that when it comes time to cleaning, you're going to pay for two filters, two...
Right.
Double, double everything.
That's true.
Double...
So would it be possible to check into the availability of a larger boiler and like know whether we can get one or not?
And that, had that aid our decision process and...
That's what I'm thinking.
You could call...
I think whoever you ask...
Web and say you...
They say that they can get it.
I think whoever you ask, we decide to do the installation, would be able to tell you whether, how quickly they can get a boiler.
Sure.
Julie, do you know when that new pipe was put into that chimney? Do you remember that?
Let's see, is there any way historically we could look at when that was done and...
So we know what's done.
See whether it was actually all the way through.
Just see what was done.
Right.
Joyce. Joyce.
Actually, no. Yeah. I've been in touch with Joyce about the property line.
Because that...
If you clean away from the front of it, you might be able to see where it goes into it and reach there and see if it's been lined.
Is that something they can get, like one of those piano stuff up there?
I would imagine. There's got to be something, even just for like a cleaning, like a port or something like that, there's got to be something.
I mean, Du Bois and King must have all of those.
Yeah.
He, he would know if that chimney's lined, probably.
Oh, right. Because they play that.
Yeah. And they probably installed all that stainless steel, but that would be a question on whether it's, you know, worth taking it out and going to a propane, in other words, to, you know, to gas instead of oil.
Because if we're looking at having to replace all that versus...
Right.
If it's there and it's good...
We can keep it and then go on.
Keep it, use it.
Right.
And we're also on a contract for oil, right? This year?
Yep.
So...
Yep.
A conversion to propane will begin again till next year sometime.
Right.
It's a mild...
Yeah, so that is, that's a, that's a really good point, Mark, so that even if we, if we thought about going to propane or some alternative, we still are already ready to pay for all that oil, and we'd have to come up with a new contract for propane and everything else.
Right.
So no matter what, it would have to wait until next summer.
Right, and I can't see putting a propane tank in now, along with getting a propane boiler, plumbing it accordingly, and having that done before it gets cold.
Right.
I don't, where you could probably get a new boiler and having it in before, you know, winter, because now you're, there's no digging outside, it's less work, it's, you know, a lot quicker to get a...
Sure.
You know, if you're looking at two months to get a boiler, so...
Did they look at wood pellets at all?
We discussed it, and it's a matter of storage and availability.
Yeah.
You know, getting a big tanker on the side of the building is not going to go to a historic preservation.
It'll cost you twice with pellets.
Okay.
Than oil.
Table us, let's table this, give us some time to, everybody to go through this stuff and put it back on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you're doing.
And Sandy, could you contact Bill to ask about when, if they know if it's lined or when they've done that, or...
Or Joyce.
Or Joyce. Two problem.
Right.
That's why the two should know that.
Citizen fireworks ban request.
My name is Erica, and thank you all for putting me in the agenda today. I'm here to talk about potential fireworks ban in the town of Wallingford. We do have Wallingford Green Day, which is awesome, solid day taking care of the environment, but why not be a town of authenticity where we carry that on 365 days of the year? You know, it's all of our responsibilities to take care of this beautiful plot of land we have here in Wallingford. And as we all know, the environment is already hurting, and fireworks voluntary act is further contributing to pollution, harming animals, and it is posing danger to humans. And I believe that, you know, we don't necessarily have to be anti-fireworks per se, but we can be pro-considerate, respecting animals, birds, dogs, and also the plants that it's affecting, because, you know, a few seconds of pleasure is really causing long-term damage. So I'm here today to really speak for the plants and the animals that can't be here to speak up for themselves today. And hopefully, if this resonates with you, I could get some backing and know like the next steps to hopefully make this happen. I did hand out, there's some pamphlets on the table regarding fireworks and the dangers that it does cause, and I'm just here, like I said, to speak for those that don't have a voice and can't show up to this meeting. And thank you so much for your time and listening to me either way, and also thank you all for contributing to a town that I love so much here in Wallingford.
Next question.
I guess the, the only thing I, because there's a lot of, there's a very big movement for the idea for, just for animals not having to deal with the sound of it, and then also, especially with wildfires that we're seeing, just even up north of us in Canada, the idea of those not doing it. I guess the, the big question is, is how much of a problem do we think if it's in our town in order to enact legislation that says this is legal in our town, or how do we regulate that? I guess that's the big question I would have.
Yeah, and my opinion with that is, you know, something that we, me personally thinks is damaging on a large scale, the way to start is small. So I think that even if it's not, if you feel like one time a year might not be a threat to us, I think that everything does start small that ends up making a bigger impact.
Yeah, I, I agree and it's just, I guess it's just the, that one time, it's just like in terms of if we're going to, because if we want to do anything, we want to make sure there's meat behind it, actually there's going to be some kind of enforcement of it if we're going to enact a law that's going to ban fireworks. So I guess the big thing is, do we have the capacity to enforce those bans? I mean, if we'd have to work with the fire warden, I would imagine to, or maybe even just make it more of a permitting process, because I think about...
Fireworks right now require a permit. You can buy fireworks.
Right.
You can't transport them to your house, but you can own them in your house.
Right.
You can't light them off, but you can light them off if you don't get caught because the police can't prove you lit them off, so...
Unless there's a nice scorched mound on the ground.
One of those kinda...
Yeah.
This, you know, and that's where it is. So they are theoretically banned now, but impossible to enforce.
Right, because you can go down over, right over into Rotland on Route Four and go to that fireworks place in front of the banana thing. And theoretically not transported home, I guess.
You can't come home with them, so, and there is permits that require, that are required if you're going to light them off, so. I mean, I don't know if it's, to enforce it any more than that, yeah, you can put a ban on it, but again, who can enforce it? I mean, by the time someone calls that they're lighting fireworks off, we get hold of someone to go there, they're done. You can't really prove that they, you know, that they were lighting fireworks off, other than, you know, a complaint, so how do you enforce?
Yeah, I guess in hopes that a ban would still stop more people from doing it, you know, hoping that people have integrity to, and know that, you know, not realistic 100% with human beings, but, you know, still putting it out there and trying.
Yeah.
Is there, do you know of other towns in Vermont that have enacted like blanket bans on them?
Uh-uh, I do not, yeah, I'm looking into that though.
Because I feel like if they have, like, almost like they've done the work for us kind of thing.
Yeah, exactly.
And figured that out and they've probably, hopefully come up with some of these things. If we did something like that, I'd feel...
Definitely.
More, because I just am completely in the dark about how we could do it.
Right.
And also, it's the tough thing of like, Wallingford Day, a big part of that is the fireworks display, so if there's, is there some way that we can replace that with, I know, like drone shows and stuff like that, but that's a whole other bag.
Right.
Definitely, yeah, I've thought of that, like other ideas of something to get gathered together that's not harming, you know, it's being more considerate.
And we do have, there is a private donor who donates towards fireworks for Wallingford Day on an annual basis.
Right, it's like, you know, working, working with Barbara and seeing whether or not there's another way that we can honor her husband's legacy.
Exactly.
If she's going to continue donating that each year.
Well, we do have a standing fireworks display that's scheduled to happen soon.
Right, right, because we're going to have one in August.
Yes, September.
September, sorry, right, 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 because we're not...
Labor Day weekend, correct? September 2nd.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured starting this now might happen next year. Definitely don't expect it to happen next month, but...
I, I, I would love to be able to talk about it more if we had a little bit more information about how we could actually logistically implement this, that would actually make it just not a goose chase.
Yeah, I will definitely look for another town that has done something. I'm wondering if it's more around the sale of fireworks in Vermont or, you know, something like that would be more of a target.
Right.
I believe that is the case, because other towns have, where people were selling them, they had to move out of that town and sell it in different, but the fireworks were allowed, like what Mark was saying.
Yes.
There is rules, it's just, but most of its targets is selling.
And there's probably, and that's probably why they're always in those crates, like in the containers, because they can move them.
Because he's not in front of Banana Market anymore.
Right, he's not.
He's up in Pittsburgh.
It's only been a few years since they allowed fireworks to be sold.
Yeah. Before you had to be a licensed, because there was one gentleman in Cassleton, he was a fire warden and he was allowed a certain amount.
Right.
Oh, you said it's only been a few years since...
It's only been a few years since they started allowing fireworks to be sold.
Except for very specific.
Except for licensed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Would you say that it's increased since the sales have increased or not necessarily?
No.
People would just drive to...
Not in New Hampshire.
Exactly.
They just go to New Hampshire.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing up your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mission statement.
Because it's in front of us.
Right.
Is Tom Ford still on? Tom Ford, let me speak to him.
Is there conservation plan?
I thought he was on the agenda. For the mission statement, conservation.
Oh. We did...
We just realized that we had...
We just realized that I missed that. Doing it right now.
But was there any talk about the mission statement right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, he's not coming because it has something else going on or...
He just sent it, I don't think he planned to come, just, the support asked the conservation to work on the mission statements and we did and he just forwarded what we have.
Well, we had some second thoughts about what was submitted and I thought he was going to try to explain it. Essentially, that's what they want to say, there was another way of not being, having a graph. It was more of a generalized statement. It was just more general terms about our major goals and things, and then we would use this as sort of an everyday worksheet. But they say the same thing, but this has a little more detail of the effects of some of the issues here, so. I'll have to talk to him and see if he can get that into you, unless he's changed his mind, so.
My, my one comment was that it did seem more like a plan to me than a, than a mission statement.
Yeah, that's what we, we talked about, just being more general. And we can get that down to, to you right away.
Okay, you want to table it though?
Yeah, why don't we...
Yeah, we'll table it so you can put it out in the format that's more of a mission statement.
All right.
Thank you, Ralph.
Highland water supply estimates.
Want to speak?
I'm Ann Alwood, I'm here with Melissa Whitmore, we're representing Highland Water Supply Association. We were very excited, very pleased to receive ARPA funds from the select board in the amount of $9,200 to do some very needed repairs to our aging system. I came in to do all the paperwork and Sandy advised me that we needed to get bids because it exceeded $5,000. And she gave me a bid policy, purchasing and bidding policy of yours. Really, for almost two months, we have pursued bids. We have one from the original person who provided one for our application for ARPA. I have personally made about 25 calls. One of the complications is it's curb stop repair, so you kind of need a plumber and you need an excavator, and sometimes they don't go together and you need to get two to work together to do the job. The one estimate we have is a collaboration between an excavator and someone who has plumbing experience and knowledge of the water system. We are fully supportive and respectful of bidding for public projects. It's, it's important for transparency, but we're kind of at our wits' end and we're looking at the clock, worrying that we're not going to find someone to do this work if we have to get two more bids. We noted in your policy in two areas, both in the amount area, C under policy objectives and under federally funded purchases, that the select board can determine that there's only one possible source for a proposed purchase, or that the select board may waive the bid process when it deems it to be in the best interest of the town. I know that the, the ARPA committee struggled with the fact that some of the proposals received, people needed to get the work going, so the select board advised the ARPA committee that work could be done and build retroactive ARPA funding. And that's what we're really asking, because we have leaking curb stops in our system, we're losing water, many gallons, hundreds and thousands of gallons, so it's costly to the owners of the system, the operators, the users, and it's, it's only going to get worse. So we, we have a willing contractor who will get the work done in 2023, before winter, when more problems always arise, and we're asking you if you would consider exercising a waiver of the bid policy for this particular project.
How many are you looking to do this year?
Pardon?
How many are you looking to replace curb stops?
Four.
Four?
Yes.
You know where I'm going with this, Phil? Maybe you have time?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's not a big project.
I'm just wondering if the town, again, we have an excavator sitting there.
Oh, use it.
Use it. In other words, the town would, if you can, if we, again, coordinate a plumber and the town crew to dig up your curb stops, the town will dig them up, plumber will repair them, the town will fill them back.
I don't think the town crew is going to have any time to be doing that.
Well, that's what I was going with.
No, when they get, once we get a machine back, they're going to be full bar grading roads, because they're in terrible shape.
All right, and that's where I was going, that's what I was asking.
You know.
Four curb stops, I figured, you know, between now and frost.
You know, the initial responses I was getting is that the project was too small to bother with for a lot of the contractors, but now with the flooding, all of the same people who would do curb stop issues are dealing with the flooding, the mop up and repair, so it's, it's added to the difficulty.
I mean, it feels like you guys have done the due diligence to try to find somebody to do this for you, so it's...
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, it's not like you only went to two and then that's it, you went to, was it six?
Quite a few.
Well, I've, since I've provided the list to Sandy, I've made about 11 more calls,
I, I, I think that's okay. Personally, I would say that I think that we should, we should waive, because we have somebody that will do it that's local and going to do it before the end of the year.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Are there any issues? Because actually, Simon's operation runs Fire District and then you feed off the Fire District.
Right.
Are there any issues with that at all?
No, in fact, I, I asked them to consider doing the project and we would pay them with the ARPA funds, and he said that he does not compete with local contractors in his work for District One.
I have no objections to waiving.
No?
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I agree.
The consensus or...
It's by consensus, Sandy, or do we need to make a motion?
We can just do it by consensus and that's just to waive the bid process?
Right.
Would you like me to do a formal write-up for backup to your...
I think what you gave us was more insufficient.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
So state mandated reappraisal notice. So we did receive a letter from the state stating that we are required to do a reappraisal. So the actions we took back in the center of...
Yes.
Just proved to be the right thing to do. I guess, the second part of that is, we need authorization to sign a... acknowledgment letter.
This letter right here, the Wallingford Meanest Response to Reappraisal Order. Can we do this by consensus? Do we need a motion?
I would do this one by a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we authorize the signing of the acknowledgment letter?
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And I think we also need approval for me to sign the contract, or did we already, I just need to sign the contract, right? We did that, all right?
Well, all five of you do, so if we could just, a motion and a second to, to sign the marks.
The reappraisal agreement?
I mean, you all voted on this last February.
I make a motion that we sign the agreement for the reappraisal.
I'll second that, okay.
Those in favor?
Aye. Who was the second?
Carolyn.
Carolyn, there you go, right.
Select board comments or concerns? Got anything to bring up? No? Other business, School Street resident, Bob Soul would like the town in the Fire District One to coordinate installation of new water lines with the sidewalk project. Sandy's notified Stephanie, our grant administrator. It's like one painting contractor and four weatherization contractors attended the site visit at Town Hall in response to the request for proposals to paint exterior trim and insulate the basement, and bids on that are due in late August.
Okay.
This is, this is just a question, when they were doing the, for the sidewalks? I guess Kathy would probably know the most, that the, were they going to keep the trees, the crab apples?
I, I'm not sure, the sidewalks are going to be five feet wide. So...
Yeah, just curious about that, because this, it's a pretty part of our...
There was no talk about taking the crab apples down.
Okay, we'll go with that, that's all.
I can, I can say that.
They'll be doing informational meetings at some point with all the people on the street, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to see if anybody had been brought up or talked about.
I think I mentioned earlier that Wallingford Thrift was going to be administering a $10,000 grant for folks that had flood damage. And Sandy's filed an application to request... to request public assistance on behalf of the town of Wallingford through the FEMA portal. I think that pretty much covers it.
Is there anything else as far as FEMA goes that we need to do for the roads and stuff? And we got all our documentation. We've got all our estimates.
We have, we have six months to do all these emergency repairs, which I could think we're going to be well done in six months.
What's that?
All the repairs to the flood?
Yes.
Maybe with the exception of Walden Lane and the groundhog.
Well, yeah, that's something that we're going to have to deal with.
We'll eventually, I mean, since requesting their assistance, we'll eventually be assigned a FEMA, FEMA personnel. And we'll start going through all of the I's, that's a T's crossed. They'll come down and they'll assess. Like sort of what we did with V-Trans, but in much more detail. We got right up the box on each road. What, I mean, V-Trans said it was 5,000 a section and it's actually 3,800. Yeah. And I've, I've been hearing that FEMA may, from time to time, combine sections to add up to 3,800. So I think when they come, we should show them everything. Everything. Hartsborough.
Every road.
And see where that adds up.
Yeah, because they did mention it was, could be the whole road, not just part of it.
Okay.
That would be good for us.
We only showed V-Trans, maybe half.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't do anything on Hartsborough or West Hill or Dougway. We don't think that too bad. We had some little washes on different streets.
Parker Road or no?
Parker Road. That's the one they denied.
They denied it.
Because they said they only had 4,000, which.
Exactly.
Brian Sanderson had just told me that morning it was 3,800. And he said 5,000, so they denied it. And then it turned around. Sandy found out it was 3,800.
Exactly.
So that's why, because they, because they assessed 4,000 on Parker and said it wouldn't qualify.
Right.
Phil said, well, that doesn't qualify. And we're not going to bring it down this road or this road.
Exactly.
So it may be a big difference.
But we're fixing them all, right?
And they want us to do that.
Back to their specs.
Yeah, they don't want us to wait. Six years ago, we had to wait. They don't want us to do that.
Ember storm, yeah. Left a liability open.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing Sandy brought up to me earlier today was, I can't think of the gentleman's name that showed up at the town garage to estimate the insulation issue.
From the LCT?
Yeah. And he did, I was down there. He did walk around, take pictures. And we did make some holes in the wall so he could see that the insulation was wet and it was moldy in the office. I don't think there was much damage in the bathroom. I think that was just high enough. But he did take a lot of pictures and said he was going to submit a thing for it. I know we've heard anything back on that. He measured the whole shop. As far as I know, I think he was going to measure the same four foot down, minus that our wiring was all up. So that wasn't an issue. It was just going to be the insulation and reboarding or plywooding or whatever it was.
That's not bad. Learned the last time, so we saved it this time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Quick work.
Are there any motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.